The time is 6:05. Today's date is November the 29th, 2017. Called this Special Meeting of Wesco Superintendent School District's Board of Trustees to order. Item number two, Establishment of a Quorum. Let the record reflect, we have a full board. Item number three, Superintendent's Report, School Safety. Dr. Canales.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. We do have one report on school safety. Mr. Fela Rosa will be reporting on this, and you do have the PowerPoint presentation with you. Ms. Escalón will help out. Reading, Selma.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, Mr. President, members of the board. I have with me Ms. Melissa Escalón. She is the Director of Safety and Security for the district. As you know, Safety and Security is one of the departments that falls under Risk Management, which of course is what I head up. So we'll just give you a brief presentation on some of the things that we're doing and some of the things that we would like to do to enhance student safety. The Safety and Security Department, of course, one of the goals, one of the main goals of the district is to provide safe, secure, technology-rich schools and facilities, is one of the five major goals enacted by Dr. Canales. And this is specifically goal number two, Positive Learning Environments. The Safety and Security Department does play a key role in making sure that this happens. Okay, if I can. So the Safety and Security Department consists of 53 full-time personnel, 51 which is of course, uniformed security officers. We have 10 guards at each of the major high schools. We have three guards at each of the four middle schools. Two guards currently assigned to Horton. One guard assigned to each elementary school and smaller high school, which is of course being early college high school and South Palm Gardens. We have two night security officers that patrol in the evening. One rover unit which fills in for individuals that don't make it to work or have other commitments. And also one K-9 unit currently. Oh my, this PowerPoint is not cooperating with me. Okay. Okay. So of course, anytime you have a uniformed officer present, it does deter crime, hopefully. That is the theme of it. Also, our security guards respond to any situation where security is a concern. The Safety and Security Department also administers all fire and security alarm systems. We develop emergency response plans. And also, we are the point personnel for coordinating with any, with Wesco PD, Constable's office, and of course, the Sheriff's office. But above everything else, Safety and Security is everybody's responsibility, not just the guards that are assigned to the campuses. So we do take time to educate into staff and individuals in different methods. This is part of our emergency response plan. Basically, there's four standard response protocols when there's ever a threat to a campus. The first is announced as a lockout, and basically that means that all the doors in the facilities are locked. Operations resume as normal, however, nobody comes in. Lockdown is of course, when a major threat is perceived or active, lights, lots and sounds. This is the code red, if you will. This is when the doors are locked, everybody's in their classrooms, classroom doors are locked. Basically, you stay quiet until the all-clear is given. And campuses do do these drills on occasion. Some of them do it once a month, some of them do it less than that. And of course, there is evacuate, standard fire drill, and of course, shelter in place of any severe weather comes up.
Mike, let me interrupt you real quick before you continue. On this lockdown, on the code red, just recently, there was some incident, some event at a school, that the faculty and the teachers were praised for being able to secure their building. What they did, what they, how they did it, I don't know. But can you make sure that our securities know that our teachers are taught what was done, and how they were able to do it, and that we are trained and able to do the same thing they did? And if we're already there, perfect.
Yeah. Most of the campuses do conduct, and I don't want to say the name of the campus, because I don't want to be inaccurate, but one of the campuses did, they do time and they monitor. So that's what we tell our campuses to do when they do fire drills or lockdown drills, to time it to see what, how long it's going to take for individuals to evacuate the building.
Okay. Well, but at the same time, I want you to find out if they had some, I know there's some devices that are on the market that they sell for doors. I know there's some devices that some lock, for the rooms to lock down. Did they hide the kids in a special way? Was there some technique? Was there something special that they did? How did they do it to where they were able to keep the guy out of the classroom, out of the classrooms? You know, I'm sure the information's out there somewhere.
Oh yeah. So along with the things that we have been doing, we've also initiated some, we've also created some new initiatives that will improve and enhance the safety and security of our students. One of them is all campuses should be fenced in, I should have changed that to will be fenced in by the end of the school year. There are about four campuses that are left that are yet to be fenced around, but that will happen this school year. We're also, of course, the board approved a method of construction procurement for an access control system that will be starting with the elementary schools. There is also a new alarm system for Wesaco High School that was approved by the board several meetings ago. So both of these projects are currently in the RF, or the bid specifications are being put out. We are going to purchase a second K-9 unit that will be owned by the district. The information, I believe, we submitted in one of the board updates. We used to have two. We lost one, so we have definitely seen the effects of only having one K-9. So we're going to go ahead and purchase another one. I was just informed by Mr. Sanchez that there is some funds available to revamp some of the gates and create an open access for some of the campuses, so we are evaluating that. Of course, things are good. I mean, these are positive steps that we're taking for safety of our students. But in light of recent events, we are working on the following security habits to present to the board, to get their input and hopefully approval at a later date. So one of them is a resource officer program. Resource Officer Program will put law enforcement personnel in our schools on a full-time basis. We have had several discussions with the Wesco Police Department. We do have several MOUs that we've been reviewing with District Council. But basically, the initial plan is to put five police officers and one sergeant on our high schools, of course, but they will respond to instances where as needed. Of course, at the high schools, you have the, more of the instances of drugs, violence, fights, of course, so they would be the law enforcement activity there. Some of the benefits and some of the things that we're looking at doing, or this is how it would kind of work. Wesco ISD would pay the salary and benefits for these police officers for 187 days, it would be your standard school year. The Wesco Police Department would pay the salary when they're not working here at the district. But that would ensure law enforcement presence year-round. Some of the benefits, of course, it does provide a positive learning environment. We'd like to build positive relationships between law enforcement and the community and reduce instances of school violence. We'd like these officers to be positive mentors for our students. And of course, we would have an immediate response for any drugs, weapons, assaults, or any other offenses that are committed, thus reducing the crime by juveniles and young adults. As everybody knows, you're less, very less likely to do something wrong if there's a police officer present, even speeding, if you will, if you see an officer. So we feel that'd be a very good positive step for the district and better enhance our security program. Next question is always, how much is this going to cost? This is a preliminary estimate of what it would cost for one year for five police officers and one sergeant to work here full-time at Wesaco High School. It's approximately $290,000 per year. This encompasses salary and equipment. The equipment for a resource officer would be more or less what the city would charge us to have a vehicle for each officer here on campus. Of course, all of this is negotiable, and, you know, once we get, I guess, the green light, or if we decide to take this any further, then we'll commence those negotiations.
Mike.
Yes.
What is the cost if, and I know we would be saving money this way, but what is the cost if we were to do our own Wesco ISD?
I have that, I have that data too.
Did I jump again?
I'm sorry?
Did I get ahead or something?
Just a little bit.
Okay.
But this is just, the next sheet is just a breakdown of the total cost. Of course, you have wages, FICA, TMRS, which is the Texas Municipal Retirement System. This is data that was furnished by the City of Wesaco. So it kind of carves out everything that we would be paying, and then what our share would be for 170, 187 days for these officers. And this data is reflected on the previous slide that I showed you, but this just kind of breaks it down a little bit more detail. It's just for your reference. Come on. Okay, here we go. So just, just some things to consider as we move forward with this project. We would have to initiate an MOU approximately nine to 12 months, or we would not be able to start operations until nine to 12 months after an MOU is approved. And the reason for this being is, once we do execute the MOU, these six officers, of course, will be pulled off the street. So that would give Wesco Police Department time to hire and train new officers to replace the officers that would be working in the school districts. Of course, the officers that we end up getting would be selected by the department and our staff as well. We certainly, there are advantages to having seasoned veterans in these positions and police officers right out of the academy, but you have to have the right fit of police officers to work in a school district. Of course, the benefits and insurance will be provided by the city, however, we'll be paying for it. One of the things I'd like to mention is the District Advisory Committee ranked this program as in the top five of the district priorities. And I believe the number one you will be voting on later this, later this evening. And of course, it's basically cost-effective law enforcement. But to your question, Mr. Gonzalez, if we wanted to facilitate our own police department, roughly, conservatively estimating, it would take about, initial investment about $510,000. And I broke it down with wages, FICA, insurance, equipment, and so forth. So the difference is, this is our police department versus contracting with the city.
Mike, I think that we've visited this before.
This data came from about, maybe about four years ago is the last time we looked at it.
Well, but it was a million dollars back then to start the, restart the police department. But that included vehicles and weapons and...
That included brand-new, brand-new equipment for the first, first year. Then after that, of course, it was dropped dramatically.
Is this a five? Is this for five?
Yeah, I don't remember how many officers that was, that were proposed back in the day that made, made a million dollars.
Might have been more.
It might have been more officers.
There was more officers.
This is based on five officers and one sergeant to start off with. But if we double that, then yes, it'd be a million dollars.
Because I think if you need to start, if you're going to start our own police department, we need to get a chief and all other kinds of different stuff and...
It was 15 officers, including a chief, the first couple of years ago. So that's why it was, there's a big change.
So double the force, double the price, so a million dollars.
But that was a grant when this was started.
Original one. The original one was a grant?
Yeah, the original back in early 2001, Dr. Rivera, when you were here. I believe that was funded through a grant through my research that I did. Yes?
Cop's grant.
Cops grant. So that's basically what we're looking at if we would create our own police department. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how the board would...
Are most of the districts using their city police force now, or they have their own police force?
I have that data as well, so I'll... If I can get the PowerPoint to work, okay. So basically, the following, Ed Calchelsa, Harlingen, Monte Alto, Sherrilland, and Mercedes have a resource officer program where they contract with the city to provide police officers. La Villa and PSJA do not utilize any type of contracts or police departments. They rely on their own internal security guards, basically how we operate now. You have La Feria and Mission CISD that are currently working on opening a police department of their own. And of course, Brownsville, Donna, Edinburgh, La Jolla, McAllen, Portisbo, and San Benito CISD have their internal police departments. So based on what direction the board would like to take, or future date, we can start, you know, concentrating on getting this done. That's where we're at right now. If anybody has any questions or would like to initiate a discussion.
Personally, I feel that using the police department, Wesco Police Department would be a good avenue for us. Quicker, if not anything else, or faster, should I say? And then get more input, more information on pros and cons of having our own or not having our own. So, but I know that with all that's been happening and that's been coming up on media and stuff like that, I think we need to do something.
When was the last time we had a police department here in...
2000, 2008.
Yeah.
It was open for one year.
We only had it for one year?
Yes, sir. Before it was closed, it was open from 2001 to 2004.
When I was teaching, we used to have resource officers. I know we had one at B. Garza. What happened to that program?
The grant, there was not enough funds.
Oh, okay.
Any grants now?
I can look.
We've been looking. It's really, we, I'm not going to say, no, there's not any, but we have not seen the fund, we have not located any grants.
Dr. Rivera, your thoughts?
To be continued. I have, I have concerns.
Well, certainly, we can bring this back into workshop setting and provide more information, but this is supposed to be just a preliminary report to the board.
Well, I asked our superintendent to bring this item forward, because I want to start conversation with the board and, and moving forward, I'm trying to protect our kids at a higher, higher level of protection. And I know it's up to the board as a whole to make the decision, but it has to be brought forward to get there. So this is a beginning.
Has incidents increased at the high schools or middle schools that we, and I understand what Mr. Lopez is saying, has the referrals or the discipline, has it increased that we definitely need the police department or the resource officer, whichever way we go?
Haven't, we haven't done, conducted any research as far as, you know, the referrals go and instances. We do have data that states how many times the police are called to the campus, and we can certainly present, give you all that in an update or in a workshop.
Can we ask the...
Dr. Cantu.
Dr. Cantu?
Yes.
You know, since he's the principal there at Wesco East, see what...
We really haven't seen an increase. It's been pretty typical. We do have cases when we have to call police.
Right, of course.
We'll find, when, if we have a case with drugs, they come, they pick up the drugs, make sure that we have a chain of evidence that we turn that in. If it's found, then they pick that up. If, you know, so I know that with the changes in the law, anything, if it's a Class C misdemeanor, they're not charging students as far as, you know, if it's a fight, it's no longer disorderly conduct, those kind of things. So it's more limited to more severe type calls. So I know that we haven't been calling as much since those laws have changed.
Right.
Because now, you know, they're not charging students if they get in a fight or those kind of things.
Right.
Police presence is always good.
What I would like to see, you know, basically what you're saying, is some kind of survey to see what the parents feel about our schools, to see what the teachers feel about safety, and also our students. I would like to see what they think.
I know that they've been having coffee conversations with the community.
That, and another thing that's just come up is, in speaking to cabinet members, climate surveys that include questions about safety that help guide us with parents are always a good thing to do every now and then. We've done them, I've used them as a principal, and then with a principal, using assistant principal for improvement and district advisory committees. So that's something that we are considering. Cabinet members have shared, and Mr. Cantu, that that has happened in the past that helped feed the planning for the district. So it's something that we would definitely look into.
We need to hear from them. We need to hear from the whole, all the parents, not just when you have these meetings. Do some kind of survey to go home and see what the kids... I will tell you that some of these kids do not feel safe in our schools. They don't feel safe. And we can say they're safer, whatever it is, but they don't feel that way. Some are afraid to go to the bathrooms. And it's not just here, it's everywhere.
What is the, you know, the 290,000, what would that equate to in regards to how many more security guards would that bring us if we were to apply that amount to hiring more security guards?
I'd have to do the, I'd have to do the math on that, I'd get back to you. But certainly, we can have more security guards. However, we're not having uniform law enforcement presence as far as an armed presence.
Mike, let me ask you a question real quick. So if we do get these, you know, licensed security resource officers, I mean, are we going to cut back on, on security?
No.
We're not going to cut back on security? This will be in addition to what we have?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Mike and Melissa, for me, it's going back to Dr. Rivera, get the climate survey from everybody, staff, students, families. But I think in our updates, we see incidents, the reports that have happened at the high schools, and obviously, drugs is one of them. I really would like to see how fast we can move on a dog, another dog of a district of our size, to just have one dog. I don't think it's, it's good enough. And so along with your process, so I think that should be number one while this survey goes out to everybody that needs to get that survey.
Okay. Well, let's get that survey going to the parents, students, faculty?
But all parents and all, all parents and all staff, not just the high schools, elementary included, middle schools, please.
And it's a good thing to do every so often, because like I said, we use the information, we look at data for planning at the district, supporting campuses, campuses use it for planning. So we can look at, and we'll look at it together, because there may be some other areas that we want to. And some of the instruments lend themselves for safety and security, plus others, like impact of the educational experience and things. So we'll work on it together.
Just make sure that, you know, whoever participates in this, that we know that they have a child in their, in elementary or in middle school or in the high school, so that we can determine who's the ones that are kind of worried the most.
Okay. And when I was principal, we had the resource officers, and the presence does help. You know, maybe it might prevent the students getting into fights because they're going to be arrested right away. But the drugs and all that, one police officer, two police officers cannot deter all drugs from campus.
Of course not, sure.
You know, but, yeah, the presence does provide a little better, safer environment. That's correct.
Correct. Okay. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Thank you.
Melissa?
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, discussing impossible action for the board to approve a procurement method of construction for the new fieldhouse project at Wesaco High School. One, board determination of procurement method of construction that will provide the best value to the district for the project. Two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project, or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. And number three, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposals. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, this is a $2.9 million project with an estimated substantial completion of September 21st, 2018. On March 9th, you approved Gomez, Venda, Science Architects from Brownsville, Texas to develop the plans and specs for the construction of the project. And on June 19th, we were granted the approval of the schematic design for the project. So we're at the point where we are asking for, we're recommending the competitive sealed proposals, method of construction, asking for you to determine whether you want to retain the authority to rank the proposals or assign it to administration, and that you approve the eight criteria that will be used for the ranking.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and use sealed proposals for staff to rank them with the points that are there to be used for the ranking. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera, second by Isidoro, to use the sealed proposals, method of construction, have the staff rank those proposals, and use the points as presented for the ranking.
I'd like to suggest that, call it competitive sealed proposals.
Competitive, yes.
Because it's a technical term for constructing projects.
Okay, we're gonna, Dr. Rivera?
Yes, I'll go with that one.
Okay, so we're going to amend the motion to say competitive sealed proposals. Isidoro, you amend your second?
Correct.
Okay. So we're going to go with competitive sealed proposals, and we're going to allow the staff to rank those proposals and use the points as presented for the, that, for the criteria, for the criteria of the ranking.
Who's on the ranking committee?
The ranking committee consists of the Assistant Superintendent for Administration Support, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Andres Sanchez, Medical, Mr. Medical, Teri Argarza, the Purchasing Director, Maintenance Department Supervisor. Is that it? Andres?
Can we get the coaches involved too, and the principal?
I think the principal needs to be in there.
You need the athletic director, the coaches?
Okay.
Get them involved too?
The athletic director and the head coach.
And the principal.
And the principal.
And the principal.
Well, we can, not a problem.
Good question.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who say no? Motion carries. Item number five, discussion impossible action for the board to consider delegation, delegating their authority to administration to approve the design development phase and construction documents phase of the following projects. Project one is Kate Project for Advanced Manufacturing Technology and Welding and Woodworking Shops Improvements. Item two, Pavilions at Quaid Middle School at Mary Hope Middle School, and Restrooms and Canopy at the Central Middle School Science Classroom Wing. Project three, Athletic Facilities Renovations at Wesaco High School and Wesco East High School. And number four, Wesco East High School Band Hall. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, in an effort to expedite, you know, moving forward with projects, the Facilities Committee, we looked at the many steps that we were bringing items to you for approval. And of course, we had to wait for every month for that, or for the next board meeting. So we're recommending that you consider approving, to delegate to administration, the authority to approve the design development phase and the construction documents phase for each of the, of the projects mentioned. Of course, we will keep you, you know, informed through the updates and establish some criteria when we need to say stop, you know, we need to come to you. And Andres can give more information on that.
Yeah, we're trying, sometimes the architects finish in between board meetings, we'll have to wait till the next board meeting to approve it. We can look at it if you're comfortable with it, and there's no changes in the budget on that timeline for the construction, we'd like to approve it. If something major changes, we'll bring it back to the board. That way, you'll make a decision, approve it or not approve it, if there's any major changes on it. We're hoping to gain maybe two weeks, in between months, and the phases get completed.
I have no problem with this, however, if there is a meeting that's coming up, is there a possibility that we can bring it to the board for approval?
Sure.
Instead of just moving forward a day or so earlier, and then the board doesn't get to really approve the projects?
Yeah, we can do that.
So let's, Andres, specifically, these two steps, what are they involved? The design development phase?
Well, after the schematic design that the board approves, when we look at how the building's going to look, and details on the inside, they continue, more details on it. They meet with their staff on plumbing, technology, maintenance, energy management, more details to finish the design, the development, and then they go to the construction documents. And then they go to the blueprint, they do one review, second review. If they make changes, we give it to them in red, the red line that they call them. They make the correction, they make with their engineers, revise it, bring it to us, they check it again. When they feel comfortable, ready to go out to bid, then we go, usually approve for construction documents, and we go out to bid.
So the design is done by you? I think the board should be, to see the design before...
The schematic?
Yeah. The schematic design, how we can approve for all the projects already. You approved all the, schematic design, you approved, you already saw what it looks like, it's got the continued, the side development, there's really not a lot to see, because you already saw the facade, what it's going to look like, the diagram of what it's going to be inside.
I'd like to see more detail on these projects.
Okay, well, what we want to see, there's a change on it, a major change, we'll bring it back if not, but if the board wants to keep that, that's not a problem.
How much time do we save?
Like I said, maybe two weeks, sometimes. Maybe they finish close to the meeting, maybe not. And it might not be a guarantee that we're going to save two weeks every month either.
I don't mind delegating our, on the construction phase documents, but I'd like to see the designs.
I agree there.
I think the last time there were issues on the, on the...
The yellow.
The yellow.
And you know, Andrew had an issue about the, the fieldhouse.
See, that was, on the fieldhouse, that was already side development and construction... construction document, ready to go out to bid. On the band hall was barely the schematic design.
Andres, I think what, what we did, what we discussed last time at the meeting, and I appreciate you trying to hurry these projects up, was to get our architects moving faster so that we could get the information to us. And I know that you're trying to stream it, streamline it even further by, once, once you get those plans and you review them, to go ahead and turn them back around and approve them. However, I, I feel that, that if you hurried our architects up, if you push them, we can still get them to a meeting and get the board to approve them.
Okay, no, not a problem.
And move forward. But we do, I do, I do appreciate you trying to, to help us by moving forward, pushing these projects.
No problem.
Okay. So is there a motion?
No action.
The, the deal is discussion and possible action for the board to delegate their authority to administration to approve the design development phase and construction documents phase of the following projects. I, I read the projects out loud and from what I hear from the board, you all want to retain the, the, want to deny it.
I'm along with Patrick. I don't mind delegating as long as in our updates, we're getting information on it because we've already seen.
Right.
What it's going to look like. They know that we didn't like the yellow to the band hall. They know that the fieldhouse looked generic.
So you're making a motion?
So.
So what, what's the difference between the design documents phase and the construction documents phase?
Right, because talking documents.
Could go through.
Well, that's what I'm concerned, like, if the construction, if it's just processing work orders, things like that, I don't have a problem with something, delegating that. I think that'll.
That is the details and all the materials involved and the construction for the design that you approve. Don't make the changes that you incorporated.
Yeah, I don't mind that.
That you mentioned.
As long as we have control over the design of the buildings.
Yeah.
Is that fair?
And like I said, we can bring back the design development phase, which will be still looking at the design, the schematic option to see anything.
All the details about the way it's going to look would be.
Bring it back.
Would, that would include the design development phase. Any changes requested, everything in terms of the way it looks, that would be the design development phase.
So I, I'll make a motion to delegate the construction documents phase to administration. But retain, but for the board to retain the design documents phase.
Well.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to allow the, to delegate the, the authority to administration to approve the design development phase.
No, only the construction documents.
Only that.
Only the construction development.
Only the construction. And then we, we retain the, the final.
Approve on design development, yes.
Correct. Okay. So the motion is to approve the, the design development phase and we approve the construction documents.
No, the other way. You approve the sign development and we approve the construction documents.
The delegation is only of the construction document phase to the administration. Everything else would remain the same.
Okay. Okay. So we're, the, you guys are going to do the construction?
Yes.
Yes.
Design development, you look at it, make sure the colors, everything looks fine. Once you're okay with that, then we'll look at the last.
Got it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
I'm going to say no.
Okay. One no, motion carries. Item number six, discussion and possible, possible action for the board to consider selection of an attorney firm for the collection of delinquent tax, property taxes, RFQ number seventeen dash zero two dash thirty-one. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, at the November thirteenth, 2017 board meeting, this item was tabled by the board. We do have two attorney firms. And for consideration, you've been provided ranking, a ranking worksheet. We are recommending that you select an attorney firm for the collection of delinquent property taxes.
I'll make a motion to go with Lamburger, Gogan, for tax attorney. Blair and Sampson. We have a motion to go with Lamburger, is there a second?
Are we going to use these ranking sheets?
He's already made the motion, so we don't have to rank them. We have a motion to go with Lamburger, is there a second? We have a motion to go with Lamburger, is there a second? They're being called three times, the motion dies, is there a second motion?
I move to continue with our current tax attorney.
There is a motion to continue with the current tax attorney, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's a second, there's a motion by Isidoro Neto and a second by Patrick Kennedy to continue with the current tax, tax collection firm that we have. Is there any further discussion?
I just feel that the processes, the way it was done, is that we can rank these ourselves. That was the intention, for us to rank them and then be no motion. And then whoever has the votes would be selected. So, so I just feel we're not following what the agenda, the way it was, the way it was worded.
I have no problem ranking if the board wants to do that. Yeah, we can do the ranking.
You know, I'd, I'd like to point out, you know, Andres, can you come to my?
You know, Dr. Rivera, I, I see what you're saying, however, and, and not, I hate to disagree with you, but there's no mention of the ranking on the, on the.
Motion.
On the motion.
But we can rank them.
But we're in discussion.
No, but there's a motion over in a second, so we need to vote on it.
We're in discussion.
We're just, discussion.
We're in discussion.
Andres, you provided some documents that we have here before us.
Yes.
And we have our, our last two years of collections from.
Purdue.
Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins and Mott. We have twenty-seven point forty-eight and twenty-seven point sixty-one.
Yes, sir.
And for 2012 and 2013, when Lamburger, Gogan, Blair and Sampson, we have twenty-seven point ninety-two and twenty-six point forty-three for their, their last two years before they both worked together.
Before we switched, uh-huh. And then the report also shows two years earlier.
And this is with all the modifications and whatnot.
Yes, and the modification has to do with the tax adjustments, uh-huh. Which here the percentage shown on the first page of the tax collection report that I present every month.
Have you had any problems?
No. Well, we never had any problem with anybody, none of the companies. We work with both and we work well with both of them.
You know, I just want to say that, you know, the reason I had made the motion to go with Lamburger is that I know, I know percentages, you know, you look at percentage, percentages and, and really it doesn't mean much. You know, you can't take percentages into the bank, but if you look at the collections, you know, at the dollar, the dollars amount, that's what, that's what we put in our bank here. Lamburger collected four point seven million, 2012, 2013, four point five million, and 2013, 2014. And then the Purdue-Brandon, four point three million and that four point one million. So the difference there.
The figures on the four million are the balances at the beginning of the year.
Oh, those are the balances?
Column C is the one for collections.
Okay.
What is our budget based on?
We, we budget, I use twenty percent of the amount that we had to begin. For example, the sixteen-seventeen year, we started with four point four million.
Let me correct my question. Are we budgeted on percentage, what we collect, or we budget on dollar amount?
No, I, I use a percentage of the balance that we expect at the end of the year.
And what's our percentage again, I'm sorry?
Twenty percent of the percentage.
Twenty?
Twenty. I like to be conservative and clear, we don't collect, people don't have money, they don't pay their taxes.
And, you know, normally we, we remove agencies or, or people that work for us if they're not meeting our goals and our expectations, correct? Whether it's an insurance agency or whether it's, if we remove a principal, we're removing them because they're not meeting our goals and expectations. If our current tax attorneys are meeting their goals and expectations that we set two years ago, then what would be the reason to change? You know, now, if they were not meeting our goals and expectations, I can understand that, you know, but if, unless there's something else, then that's different. But in any, any, anything that you do, if whoever's meeting those goals and expectations, you continue with that. That's. By two cents. But really, both firms have been successful. Yes, sir. And I guess my question was, that you gave us a worksheet for us to go ahead and, and rank these. So we're not following the procedure, even though it's not part of the motion, I mean, part of the, of the language, is what you all wanted for us to do, to rank these one and two.
Yeah, we, we offer for the board, it's up to the board discretion. Sometimes, the board uses, sometimes they don't.
I'd say let's rank them.
It's up to the board.
Okay. But there's a motion and a second already.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Ivan, we'll need your assistance on this one. There is a motion and a second. Are, are we okay with ranking them or do we?
We'll have, we'll have, we'll have to vote because the motion is, unless they go ahead and say, let's, let's take the motion back.
You can amend it.
You can always withdraw the motion and withdraw the second if, if those that made the motion and second want to, otherwise you vote on it.
Right. It's up to them.
Can we amend the motion to take?
You want to rank a mission up?
I, I will do whatever the majority of the board wants to do. You know, I don't have a problem. I really just rank them.
If you all feel more comfortable with that, then I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
So are, just for, for clarity, Mr. Neto, are you withdrawing your, your motion?
Yes. Okay, both motions have been withdrawn.
Now we rank them.
We're going to go ahead and rank them and then we'll, we'll entertain motions again.
Will we turn them into Andres?
Andres.
Mr. President, if you could clarify to the, to the board, the rankings of one and two. How are we going to, how are we going to do this?
Yes, the one means the higher company.
Okay, so one is.
The lower number will be the highest company, right.
Okay, just, just to be transparent with.
The company with the lowest score will be the number one company.
Okay.
The preferred, is that?
That would be, the higher score to the ranking, but the board, yeah. That, that's what we do, to make it easy. The one with the lowest score.
Like you're playing golf instead of basketball.
Right, exactly.
The lowest score.
I want to play golf.
Lowest score will be the first.
The scores are very, very, very close, very close. There is a, there is a difference and the one that came out with the number one is Purdue- Brandon Fielder and Lamburger, Gogan Blair came out with the number, number two. It is within one point, one, one difference. So I'll entertain a motion unless there's any questions on the ranking.
I think since, do you need a motion since the ranking, we already ranked them?
You need a motion.
You need a motion?
A motion.
Okay, I'll move.
Motion two?
To go with the.
The ranking?
Yes, with the ranking.
Okay. We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Isidoro and a second by Patrick to use Purdue-Brandon as our attorney firm for collection of delinquent property taxes, RFQ number seventeen dash zero two dash thirty-one. Any further discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Those opposed? Discussion and possible action to hire legal counsel to conduct insurance audit investigation. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, at previous board meetings, administration was asked to look into the possibility, or to find somebody, a firm to help conduct an audit of insurance. Mr. Ivan Pettis, our legal counsel, assisted with that and has information to share with the board.
Right, there's been some indication or from, from the board in the past to, to want to conduct an audit repricing and also to, of past plan years with respect to the TPA, potentially stop loss. I know there's been some just generic discussion, as well as looking into the contracts that have been in place, ensuring that the district got the deal that was contracted for. So John Millen is the attorney that represented the district in a previous insurance matter and he's offering to perform the audit and do the, the investigation work on a contingency amount of thirty percent. The scope of the, of the work is of any, of anything that's there. So that is, he will, he'll only, he'll get paid compensated thirty percent of any gross recovery, if any, of any of the, the audit or any other issues that, that might surface that might require pursuit of, of claims. And so John is here, if you have any questions, you have his, his resume. If you want to talk about scope of, of issues because it does deal with the direction with the, with a lawyer, we can, we can talk about it in front, here in the open or if you want to talk about it in the back.
I have a, I have a few questions, if you don't mind, Mr. Pettis. First and foremost, number one, how this agenda item reads, I don't like the word investigation. It, it makes it seem like our office, our, our district did something wrong. And that's just, I want that for the record, that I think our office does a phenomenal job here. And I, I don't think this is an investigation on their office, it's, it's on the health plan.
Insurance, right.
So number two, I'd like to also, have we ever done an audit before? On the health plans?
Not that I've, that I've been involved with.
Yes, we did. Audit, yes.
Okay, so my question is, did we go, did we go out for RFQs before we did that or did you all just pick an attorney? How did, because I think when I got on the board, it was kind of towards the tail end of that investigation. So I just want to make sure we're, procedurally, we're doing the right thing. So if going out for an RFQ first and then we hire whoever that may be to, I, I just don't want it to come back on us to say, well, you just chose somebody. But again, I'm looking out to those of you that were on the board prior to me, so Mo, Oscar, Doc, because the rest of us here came on later, all of us, including Dr. Canales. So Ivan, if you guys can help, again, because I just want to make sure we do this correctly and we're being as transparent as possible.
Sure, and, and because it's, it's dealing with, with a law firm, there is no requirement to, to seek an RFQ. I don't recall the last time whether an RFQ was out, was solicited or whether we just figured out who, who does this type of work.
We just pick someone.
And, and, and get someone. And so I know with respect to the insurance work, you have John Millen's resume and they, they deal with insurance issues primarily, so that was the, the thought is.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to hire, hire.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to hire, hire Mr. Collins.
Millen.
Millen.
I'm sorry, Millen.
A second.
Oh, go ahead, Patrick. Yes, but for it to just read, uh, audit, not investigation, just an audit.
Okay, what is the difference, Ivan?
Well, I mean, that, that was the, that was the question, in terms of the scope of, of what you want looked at. I mean, do you want a repricing of, of the claims only? Or did you want there to be, um, an evaluation of, of contracts? And, and were contracts performed as, as expected by the district? And so that's why I wanted to.
I'd rather it be everything. So the motion is to go ahead and then conduct, hire him to do the audit and investigation.
Right, and so, and so I understand the, the word investigation may have some, some connotation to it, but it's, it's really a comprehensive review, and then pursuit of any issues that might arise. But, yeah, it's not, it's not a, um, as, as you mentioned, so.
Using the word investigation in the classical sense.
Yes.
Right, Webster's dictionary.
Exactly.
Version, it's fine.
So I just wanna make sure, uh, we don't pay him anything unless he finds any, uh, anything that.
Any wrong.
Overcharges, or?
He collects?
Yes.
He collects money, he gets money. He doesn't collect anything, he doesn't get anything.
What, what plan years are we talking about?
That, that's up to the board.
What was the question?
The plan, plan years.
Oh, okay.
I don't.
When was the last time we conducted an audit?
Two thousand and eleven.
When was the last time we conducted an audit?
Two thousand and ten.
About twenty, twenty ten.
Twenty ten, okay.
Twenty ten, twenty eleven.
Three, three year, about three and a half years ago, the, uh, we wanted to audit the prior TPA. Uh, we did do an RFQ, we selected a firm, but due to certain languages in the contracts, the audit never came to provision. Before that, it was, uh, the prior TPA that Mr. Millen represented us in, so. We, we, right, we've done it before. And, and so, just to be clear to that point, when Blue Cross Blue Shield came in, or was, was in, there was a, a contract provision similar to, to this year, the, that Blue Cross Blue Shield puts in that, uh, audits, we agree that audits cannot be done on a contingency fee basis. So, eh, so at least with respect to what, what Mr. Millen's gonna be doing, it cannot include the Blue Cross Blue Shield from, uh, plan years going predating, uh, freights, because that would be prohibited by the district's contract of Blue Cross Blue Shield.
So is there a time limit for how long we can recover on an audit?
The, the, the agreement that we had in place with freights does not contain any time limit or timeframe, and, and school districts don't have a, a classic stat, statute of limitations under which to recover for a breach of contract or anything else. There's generally a, a statute of, uh, uh, repos, which is ten years. So, we don't have a, a limitations issue of four years for breach of contract.
Okay.
As generally you'd think of.
Well, if we haven't had one in three years, we could go back the whole.
When did, uh, when did the, the last one was Blue Cross? Or right now?
The, the, the last time the board selected a firm to audit was, uh, was gonna audit, uh, Blue Cross, which was the prior TPA, like I said, three and a half years ago. But like, like Mr. Pettis mentioned, the audit did not come to fruition because of certain language in the contract.
Is that, is that the year that the district went on to freights?
Yes. Yes, so. It's standard to audit after year.
The motions, why not go back to whenever freights came on in then?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
That would be okay with me, that would, but it depends on the motion.
I mean.
Yeah, the contract reads pretty much carte blanche, the board has, to audit and take any types of, of steps they need. So, it's purposely, purposely written that way.
So we have to specify today, like, when, what year to go back, or?
Well, for all intents and purposes, you can only on a contingency basis audit from freights forward. And so it would just be freights.
Okay.
As a TPA.
Dr. Rivera, how far back would you like to go?
From the last one.
The last TPA?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll, in my second to include that.
From the last one, is that what we're saying?
You're, you're, the prior TPA, the last three, the last, the last three plan years.
That's fine.
So from, since the prior TPA.
Right, about thirteen, twenty thirteen.
Okay. The motion is to hire Millen and Associates. Dr. Rith motion to hire Millen Associates to do, conduct an insurance audit investigation since the prior TPA took over. And Patrick, you did a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. Discussion on possible action regarding possible contract for use of elementary parking lot. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, um, I'm recommending that you deny or approve a contract for use of parking spaces by a charter school at Memorial Elementary. This agenda item was requested by, uh, our board president, pending certain agreeable conditions. Uh, discussion of this item, just for the record, may be clo, maybe held in closed session.
Okay. So do we discuss it in closed session now, Ivan, or do we?
Well, because of the terms that, that were being considered for this agreement, I think it's best to discuss it enclosed, because, because of some give and take that, that was there. Then, maybe if y'all can revisit this item after the executive session, and then either take action or take no action.
Do you want us to table it, or?
No, you don't need to table it.
Just move forward?
Just move forward, and then.
And then we'll revisit this after executive session?
Yes.
Okay. And, and we're gonna move it into, into executive, so we, we can discuss with legal?
The, the, the issues and, uh, invol, the legal issues related to this agreement.
Okay.
Or to a potential agreement.
Okay. Item number nine, a discussion on possible action to approve full day pre-K beginning with the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Dr. Canales.
Check it.
Who, who did they approve? Patrick?
Patrick.
Okay, Patrick made a motion, second by Andrew, to approve the full day pre-K beginning two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Dr. Canales, did you have anything to say?
I do have a little bit of discussion. Let's get it out by next month before we go on break. Get this information out.
Out, yeah.
Let them know.
Just, we, we've had, the team has worked very, uh, hard in looking at this possibility. We've involved DAC with the, uh, million that we plan to be generating in the future, to use it to fund a full day program. We spoke to principals today, elementary, they're a hundred percent behind it, we'll find space, we'll do what's needed.
Going back to what, what you mentioned right now about the, the million dollars, where are you gonna get those million dollars from?
We're gonna be using the, the savings for the future from the two cent increase.
I just wanted for everybody to know where we're getting that money from.
The extra funds, yeah.
And so, how much are we gonna utilize from those funds?
We're projecting, what was, was it four hundred and forty? For the first year, it's about seven hundred, it's over seven hundred thousands on here, seven hundred and seventy. And then after that, we're looking at four hundred, what's it, four hundred and forty?
So how many more additional teachers will we need?
Anticipating seven.
Okay.
Now, full day pre-K, what year, what age group is that?
Four. The age group is, they're four-year-olds.
Four-year-olds.
On or before, uh, September the first of that school year.
And those are just the ones that qualify with the criteria, correct?
Correct, what we're talking about for this first year, it would be for those students that qualify, meeting the criteria, and I think there's six items.
Right.
Uh, lowing, uh, what, based on income, second language, military, and so on. Um, and then later on, uh, depending on what we see the need, maybe go into a different phase, and allow those who don't qualify to come in and, uh, and see how, how it's going.
Currently, Dr. Canales, how many, like, uh, at a given elementary, how many pre-K or, uh, classes do we have?
Every campus, every campus ha, right now has two teachers, four classes. Two in the morning, two, yes, uh, four half-days.
Okay.
Except for Ibarra, they only have one teacher, so two classes. So, we currently have twenty-one pre-K teachers.
And, and many schools are going to full, full pre-K, so.
Yes.
That's a good move.
I just have one question. Why limit the criteria, is it based on our funding?
The criteria for, in order for students to quali, it's for students to qualify for ADA, and it's set by the state.
Okay.
We can allow other students, but we wouldn't be receiving ADA.
But once we open up, Mrs. Fain did follow up, we were asked to contact TA to make sure there wasn't anything else that we had to consider. She did follow up and spoke to Howard.
Morrison.
Morrison, Mr. Morrison. And he did say that once you open up full day, you have to admit every qualifying student. So we need to make sure we have a space, you know, for, for the all qualifying.
We briefly.
Do we have a space?
We talked to the principals today, with the numbers that we have, they're, we're very positive. We had a meeting, and they're like, we'll make the space, we'll find the space, even if we have to, we're now with the, uh, computers on wheels, you know, and the Chromebooks in the classrooms, get rid of some lab spaces, since we have that other technology that you all approved, thank you. And that make it happen, but they felt the importance for, and the feedback from the kindergarten, first grade teachers, the importance of that early literacy and early numeracy will help us get to a point where kids are reading on grade level, and then we can use extra funding for enrichment activities for kids down the road.
There was a couple of things that weren't included in the budgetary information. One of them, we talked about the last time, was transportation, and we talked about how we'll actually save some money on transportation, because buses won't be making two different trips for the afternoon and for the late afternoon. Uh, but one thing that I didn't, I don't think we talked about, at least I don't remember, is food. We have.
Nutrition, I believe these students will qualify, well, they will qualify for reimbursement, so yes, we will get paid. If they qualify for, for the meals, right, for.
They'll qualify for free and reduced lunch.
Okay, and then we'll have the budget to cover the, the creation of the meals? Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to say.
We get reimbursed.
Yes, we get reimbursed.
Okay, well, that sounds good.
I just wanted to say that principals were just extraordinary today. They all got back, at one point, got back to me with the number of rooms that they were gonna have. So, we're gonna have over thirty classrooms available, if we need them. We will, uh, looking at numbers right now, we'll need it, an additional fourteen classrooms, but if the numbers grow, we, we have the room.
Great.
How many kids don't qualify?
How many?
That are in there right now, that don't qualify?
Last time I checked, Dr. Rivera, was about eighty students.
That did not qualify?
Do not qualify.
So those are not gonna go full day?
Well, next year, they'll be in kinder, so, uh.
No, but, okay, but next year's group, though.
Correct.
If you have some that don't qualify.
Now, what we are looking at is, if there is space after we admit all those that do qualify, then we will allow those students to come in.
What happens if you don't have the space?
You have to hire more teachers?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I like the idea of turning teach, uh, students away.
On the, on the same way?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I just asked that question, you know?
I know. There are a lot of students, uh, that do not qualify, that would love to come into the district, even now. But yes, we would have to hire more teachers if we wanted all those students to come in.
I just, I'm sorry, good evening, I just wanted to answer Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Kennedy. For the students that do not qualify, we do not like to turn away anybody who would like to come to Wasaco. So we do, if we do not have space, we put them on a waiting list. But before we do that, we do offer, we will look at the neighbor, uh, campus and see if they have room, and if the parent does not mind going to a neighbor campus for the meantime, we can, you know, certainly make those arrangements with the principals, which is what we have been doing, and they have been accepting. They do want their kids in school, so if we can accommodate them elsewhere, we will always take them first. If for any reason they prefer their, their zone campus, then we'll put them on a waitlist. Uh, these students, they rotate in and out, they will enroll and then withdraw, and so, our attendance people are very good about contacting people on the waiting list as soon as possible to get them in. So we try our best not to reject anybody and, and bring in as many kids.
And I'd like to add, Mrs. Fain, you mentioned like a face too. I mean, uh, the team, I wanna, you know, uh, give kudos to the team of always thinking and asking questions, and involving principals and other directors and getting feedback. But, you know, we know, like, we're looking at some other districts that do offer, uh, for all children. We're also looking at the possibility, we know that there's a district in our local area that charges, if you don't qualify, you know, here's how much you can, you can, you can pay, and they use it as a, a retention, you know, for, for teachers and staff. So we're looking at different things, I mean, we don't have any complete answers. What we do know is that we will have to make sure that we, uh, enroll every qualifying child first.
Okay.
Don't close the doors on anybody, that's all.
Thank you.
Well, Dr. Moving forward, I know that, uh, make sure that the, that this program gets everything they need. I know it's not gonna be as, as difficult as, uh, early college. When we started that up, um, that was a big endeavor and a, a big run for, a big, big run. However, I do wanna make sure that these children get, you know, and the parents get their first impression is that we, we want them there.
Thank you, yeah, and we have meetings set up tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, okay, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. On the four-year-old pre-K. Okay, item number ten, closed meeting, A Personnel Matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Item one, employment of personnel. Item two, resignations. Item three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. A formative evaluation of superintendent.
And we will also be discussing the use of the parking lot?
And we'll also be discussing the, some, some legal issues with the use of the parking lot. The time is seven-ten, and we will be going into closed session. Time is, uh, eight-oh-five, and we're back, uh, from closed session.
You have to report it, Mr. Rivera left.
Oh, yeah.
Let the record reflect that, uh, Dr. Rivera left the meeting at seven-forty-five. And, um, we'll revisit item, uh, number eight. We had gone, uh, taken this item, uh, for later, moved it to later, due to the fact that we need to discuss some legal issues with this item, and we will revisit it now. Uh, the item is discussion and possible action regarding possible contract for use of parking, elementary parking lot. Is there any motions?
Believe it's a non-action item.
Non-action? Okay, being a non-action item, we'll move on to item number ten, closed meeting. A Personnel Matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Employment of personnel, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we recommend that you approve the employment of personnel as discussed in closed session.
So move.
I'll second. There's a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar to approve as presented the employment of personnel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number two, resignations, it's non-action. Item number three, deliberation regarding an appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer or employee, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, also a non-action item. And then, no, no, excuse me, it is, uh, we have a formative evaluation superintendent.
Right, right, this was the formative evaluation, not the official end-of-the-year, uh, evaluation of the superintendent.
So it's a non-action?
That's right.
Non-action item. Okay. That's it. So, our item number twelve, adjournment.
So move.
Time is eight-oh-seven, and this meeting is adjourned.